All right, welcome back, everyone. Why don't we just launch right into it? We'll go into Section 5, which is Presentations. Dr. Lockard, I know we don't have any scheduled items under this category for tonight, but we did want to make a comment that this is normally the meeting that we have the the class size report, and we've decided not to do that this time. Did you want to?
Right. Typically, after we've gotten settled into school and we get our official September 30th enrollment counts, we'd bring the board a class size report. We'd have some discussion about how that's looking. Because of the obvious scenario that we're in and some of the unpredictability of what class sizes are looking like and fluctuating and that sort of thing, we didn't feel like that would be a good use of our time this evening. My sincere hope is that next year at this time, we'll be reporting that to you as we normally do.
Right. Okay. Thanks very much. And, oh, Dr. Dorsey?
I just had a question, but is there going to be a time when we have to report our numbers to the state?
So, the September 30th enrollment count came and went. I don't think that's been made official yet, right, Carl? So, we are required each year to do that, and then we typically will provide that to the board. I know this has been sent. There's a validation component. Mr. Streeker, are you still out there?
I might be having a little sound issue.
Oh, having a little sound issue? Okay. But yes, we're still following that requirement of total enrollment. And as soon as we get that back and get the verification process completed, I'll get that information to you as I do each year.
Okay.
And, Dr. Lockard, are we planning to provide a little bit of an update on that next month at the December meeting? I know that, you know, the numbers aren't validated and everything and final until January, but just to kind of give folks an idea of what's going on with enrollment with this weird situation that we find ourselves in.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can, yep.
Okay. So, we'll include that as an agenda item in December, just to get an update and a feel for where we are?
Got it.
Okay, great. Okay. So, with that, we'll move on to Section 6, Reports. And the first one up is the construction report. Dr. Lockard?
Okay. I'll get us started here. I know they're having a little technical issue, but the construction report, it's your standard monthly construction report. Of note, we are now wrapping up the Westminster High School facade project ahead of schedule. The only silver lining that I could find in the COVID cloud that helped us to accelerate the timeline of that project. And I don't know if Mr. Marx is able to hear us or participate, but he is available for any questions on the rest of the report that the board might have.
That was just the one comment that I had, was, you know, finally, a little bit of good news.
Plus, I'd also looked at the science room renovations. Again, I know we had talked about that last month as well, but it looks like, again, everything was approved for occupancy on October 16th.
Right.
Yep.
And the roof replacement at Cranberry as well. I put a plus beside that one.
Right. So, it sounds like Mr. Marx probably is having some of those sound issues at the moment. So, board members, oh, there he is.
I can hear you if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Thanks, Jim.
So, board members, did we have any questions for Mr. Marx?
Can't see we're still on hold with the Robert Moton parking lot?
Yeah, we're going through some design revisions, but we're working our issues out with the county, so we're going to be fine with that.
All right. Board members, anything else on the school construction report?
What do you think is the next stage that board ought to be involved or told or talked about with career tech or East Middle? What do you think for, what's the next, like, big point?
Checkpoint?
Yeah.
Well, you know, obviously, you know, we're driving our piles now, you know, so that we can start excavating for the foundations. So, the next two years is all about the major addition. The big hurdle we just went through last week was moving the utilities, the gas, the electric, water. You know, it was a lot of issues, but we finally made it through that. So, now you're going to start to see some excavating and some serious dirt moving down there to build that, build the foundation walls, and we'll be up and running soon. Then you'll start to see the steel after that.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Marx.
No problem. Oh, did you want me to comment on East, or are you good?
Fine.
Oh.
I think we just got an invite, I believe.
Yes. Yeah, I think they're doing quarter scale stuff.
Yeah.
Yes. Absolutely. Going through quarter scales, and we're working on stormwater management design with the county. We're meeting with them at the end of the week. So, we're moving well with East Middle's design.
Which I think I mentioned career and tech. A lot of school systems, a lot of architects and a lot of staff don't do the quarter scale stuff to the extent you guys do, and I think that's so valuable. I think the other, the other systems must see the problems once they're starting to build or something, where hopefully, a lot of this gets, it's amazing. If any of you guys have time to chime into one of those, it's definitely worth, worth hearing.
Actually, we-
They are.
Mr. Marx, would you mind forwarding that invitation to the other board members? I think maybe we might want to listen in, if that's okay? We promised to behave ourselves and not be disruptive, but just to kind of listen into it.
That's fine. No problem at all.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There's lots of meetings. You can take your choice. And next, next month, we'll be hoping to deliver the design development drawings to you.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
No problem.
Okay. And with that, we can move on to Item 6B, which is the Strategic Pillar Plan 3 update. Dr. Lockard, do you want to kick us off?
Okay, thanks, board members. Yep, based on the schedule and the strategic plan, November is one of the designated months for us to up, provide an update on Pillar 3. As with many things, the underlying strategies for the Pillar 3 performance measures were obviously impacted by the onset of the pandemic. Notably, almost all of our recruitment venues for this school year were canceled, and recruitment became mostly virtual. The inability to hold gatherings of any size also prohibited some of our retention efforts. Nevertheless, we think it might be a good time to use this reporting time period to place the Pillar 3 performance targets in broader context, both statewide and locally. We also want to take a few moments and discuss concepts for additional strategies that we might want to consider moving forward. So, Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Baptist and Ms. Jones are here to walk us through that presentation.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Lockard, and good evening, board members. Commissioner Frazier, I believe Mr. Henderson is going to display the presentation from there in the room, and we'll just sort of cue him up to click us through. Appreciate that introduction, Dr. Lockard, and kind of framing it within the context of COVID. And so, normally, for this report, the kind of format we've typically followed has been to talk about the strategies we've used in recruitment, retention, and what benefits we've seen from them. We've often brought staff members in to talk about their own recruitment experiences, either being recruited or serving as a recruiter, or their retention experiences with us. And, you know, as Dr. Lockard framed, we haven't been able to do that kind of work like in past years, and we didn't want to let this opportunity go, though, because we thought it'd be a good time to still take the time and maybe bring in some data that we normally wouldn't be able to bring in in the time slot for this, some external data, some additional internal data, and try to build some context around the work of Pillar 3. It's certainly our pillar. These are our goals in CCPS, but we're trying to accomplish them in a broader framework, regional, statewide, if not even national. And so, that's what, that's what we're looking to try to do and have the conversation tonight. We hope it might be, it might be interesting to you, and feel free to engage whenever. We will get to the performance measures at the end, so if you, if you bear with us for just a few slides, that's when Ms. Baptist and Ms. Jones will sort of fill that work in. I'll do the spoiler right now. We're, based on where we are, we're not asking or suggesting that we change Pillar 3, either in terms of the objectives or in terms of the performance measures. Our data has, in the aggregate, not gone backwards, but, but as far as those performance measures go, it sort of, it's in the same place. There's been some changes here or there, but overall, it's kind of the same. That being said, we still believe these measures are important and should be our goals. We just have to keep at it, and we'll talk about that, and hopefully, you know, the conversation tonight might, might put the whole thing in, in maybe a bit of a broader context. So, Bob, if you could click forward, please. There's a quote. As always, we typically have a quote that tries to capture the spirit of the particular pillar we're presenting on, and I think that gets to the work here in Pillar 3. And Bob, if you'd go ahead again. Just as a reminder, these are the, the objectives as they stand in the strategic plan. That's Pillar 3, development support a successful workforce. And then there are the three identified objectives. And like I said, at the end of the day, we're not suggesting that these be moved unless you, you desire that they be moved or modified. Next slide, please. This, this is a slide that references the Maryland Teacher Staffing Report. We've used this as an external data source, I believe, every year so far, and we'll continue to do that. It's a, it's a report produced by the State Department of Ed staff and presented to the Board, State Board of Ed. It's presented every two years, and so, we're still waiting for the next iteration. So, these overall recommendations to the state, State Board of Ed from, from Dr. Salmon and her folks, remain the same as the last time we gave that report. Certainly, the, the third bullet here is the one that, that most gets at, at the performance measures defined for us in, in the strategic plan, Pillar 3. And so, you know, this is step one of trying to frame that context. This is, this is a goal for every Board of Ed in Maryland. These are critical shortage areas, and teachers of color are identified as statewide critical shortage areas. And so, that's sort of the first step in talking about this, this broader statewide context in which we're, which we're trying to accomplish this. And Bob, if you could click ahead, what you're going to see next is the beginning of a handful of slides that are from state, from Maryland State Department of Ed, which I'll try to call MSDE going forward. These, these next several slides are all extracts from a couple of MSDE standard reports. There are, these, these, you know, these full reports are available on their website. They're not that hard to find. This first slide is from their annual student demographic report, and the next several are from their staff demographic report. I think I see Ms. Herbert's hand up?
Yes. And I know we, I went over all this, and the thing that, that really sticks out in my mind is when I look at, when we go to, when we look at our students and how they had that set up, and then when we actually look to the staff, I'm kind of puzzled why we have white, white female, white male, black, black female, black female, and, but we have a large number of Hispanics all over the state of Maryland, and I don't know why that isn't a classification also.
Yeah, that's a great question, Ms. Herbert. I know we talked about that the other day.
Right. And I just want to, I think that should be addressed.
Right. Well, a couple of things that I'll say. When we get to the end, when we get to our performance measures, obviously, we have our, our data.
Yes, we do.
We'll be presenting that. Also, this slide for students, the state does report it that way. Reports, the state reports those data for students by every subcategory.
Right.
For some reason, in the staff slides, which are the ones coming up, they, they don't do that.
They're not.
They do Caucasian, black, and then they roll up all of the others. And that's, I don't know why they do that. It may just be a matter of economy of space, because the data are reported to them by every subcategory. So, it's not that they don't have the data. The reason I wanted to use these slides here is because this is the only external data source I'm aware of where we can see and have a, have a discussion about comparative data, us to the state, state average, us to the rest of the counties. But it is unfortunate that they don't break it out this way. I will say that they did have a, I guess I'd call it a dashboard. I'm not really sure if that's what they called it. In their state staffing report, they, they used to have a functional online dashboard where all of that data was available, not only to see a view, but you could pull it and arrange it. When we were putting this together, right now, those links are not active, and I'm not sure if that's temporary or, or if something's wrong, or they're moving in a new direction. I'm not sure why that's not active right now, but in the past years, there has been an abundance of data available on their website. But that's a very good point. However, at the end, we will come back to our disaggregated data, so we will be-
And we're okay. But I just think it's very strange that the state does not include all that, so.
Right, right, yeah. This first slide is, again, you know, the purpose for showing this is because it's, it's an external source that's standard, and anyone can look at it, and it's comparative, so we can look at the other counties. And again, this is student demographics, and we, of course, also have our own student demographic data, and that's what we use in terms of measuring internally our, our movement towards our goals. But this is the glimpse we can have to look at the whole state and all the other school systems in the state. And for all of these charts, whether student or state or employees, as we go through, the top row or the top line is the total state figures and percentages, and so, that's sort of the state average. And then all of the school systems, all 24 school systems are listed alphabetically, and we've tried to highlight us in every, every one of the slides, too. And, you know, just, just a couple takeaways. The, the state as a whole, if you look at it, the student population of the state is, is very diverse. We, as a county, are less diverse, and you could take a look at any comparative other county you'd like to look at, because it ranges. I, I will say, you know, we don't want to have 100 slides, but if you were to look at our data 10 years ago, or even a few years ago, we are becoming more diverse as a county population and a student population than perhaps some people, you know, might expect. And to your point, Mrs. Herbert, I think, you know, here's a place where, where it is disaggregated, and you can see that the Hispanic population in Carroll is, is growing, and it's growing pretty quickly.
Yes, it is.
And so, that, you know, that informs what we're trying to do. Now, we, and I'm sure every other Maryland system, have the same goal in mind, which is to recruit a staff demographic that reflects our community or our student demographics. So, in, in general, the easy way to say it is our ultimate goal, even though we're trying to grow it incrementally, but our ultimate goal would be to, to finally have a staff demographic that is somewhere close to these percentages by these groups. But you can also see that that would be a goal pretty much for every other school system in Maryland. And as we talk about this in that broader picture, that has a lot to do with supply and demand of teachers. And so, that's, you know, that's one of the things we want to spend a little time talking about. Bob, if you could click forward. There's a few slides here. I won't necessarily spend much time on each one of them, but there's a few slides here that are excerpts from the State Staffing Demographics Report. And this first one is professional staff. And so, for MSDE, what that means essentially is all of the people to whom they give a, a state teaching license or administrator license or certificate. So, that's the superintendent down through the ranks and includes all of the classroom teachers and specialists. That's kind of what professional staff means here, and that's why, if you look at our number, it's slightly more than you might think of as our classroom teachers. It's also administrators, guidance counselors, media specialists, et cetera. And, and, you know, when you think back to the previous slide and what our student demographics look like, and the goal being to eventually someday match those percentages, you, you can see that we have a good bit of work to do. And you could see the, you know, the averages on the whole state, in some cases, is much more diverse. But I will tell you, when, when you look at this and, and kind of delve into it, after you get past Baltimore City and Prince George's County, who clearly have, have a very diverse workforce, Montgomery and Howard are, are somewhere significantly closer to reflecting their student population, and most of the other, other counties are somewhere on a continuum towards that, but, but nowhere near, you know, yet achieving that. It's going to take some time for, for everyone to do that. And, and that presents, you know, that's part one of, of the challenge. There's, we're going to talk about teacher supply in a bit. All of us are trying to hire the same pools of candidates, or we're trying to find and identify those candidates and get them to, to want to be applicants for us, and so are all of our other counterparts that you're seeing, you're seeing on this screen. And so, Bob, if you'll, if you'll click ahead, the, the next slide deals specifically with classroom teachers. So, that's actually fewer people than would be in the CCEA unit, for instance, because that's not the guidance counselors, the media specialist schools, like those, those folks, those are classroom teachers. But you could see it's, it's a fairly approximate set of data here in that, in that group. The next two slides, Bob, if you'll, if you'll go forward, the next two slides, the first one addresses principals, and the one after that will address supervisors, and those are basically certificated supervisors, supervisors in sort of the first floor of our building, Ms. McCoslin, Mr. Anderson's offices. You can see that, you know, it's, you could, each of us would have a different opinion on whether it's something to write home about or not, but it's certainly demonstrable progress. We have made tremendous progress in our efforts to promote persons of color into leadership roles. These data are not ultimately where we want them to be, but there has been some dramatic movement here within the last decade. And, you know, we did want to share these data points because we believe, you know, if we just deal with the performance measures, which tends to be how we run this report every year, it's easy to forget that there are some successes everywhere. And I do think one of the themes we want to end with is all of this work builds upon itself, and sometimes it builds upon itself slowly. And I think we need to recognize that and also recognize that, that that's important, that we, that we not abandon the goals, that we not, you know, maybe lower the goals. They're important to keep them as something to aspire to. But it does take time when we talk about the kind of strategies we believe need to be in place to really move our data forward in a, in a much more rapid pace. But, but our promotional rate has improved pretty, pretty decently in the last several years, and I do think that's an important step towards those, you know, those ultimate outcomes. And I'm not saying it's going to change tomorrow by any means, but it is a positive step forward.
Okay. So, can I just interrupt just for one moment?
Sure.
You're saying it's a positive step forward. Are we looking at the, the principals? Looks like, I'm just keying in right now on the African American population. Looks like there are four total administrators, two females, two males, if I'm looking at the right lines here. I think I am.
Yeah. Dr. Dorsey, I think what, what Bob had on this, well, he might have switched it. Now, it's principals on the screen. It was, it was sort of content supervisors a second ago.
Right. And that one, I think, is slower yet, right?
Well, slower yet, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, like, like I started with, you could certainly have an argument that this isn't, that these aren't data to write home about, but where we were not too many years ago was unfortunately a, a much less favorable place. And so, there was the, the first couple of years that I joined the staff, there were, there were zero principals of color, for instance. It took a, you know, and so, that's, that's not good. That's really actually not good at all. But the Boards of Ed over time, not just the sitting Board of Ed, but the ones before you, said this, this needs to change and change rapidly, and, and that data is changing more quickly than the, say, the teaching data, the teacher workforce as a whole, or the professional workforce as a whole. That's, that's the only, you know, the only point I was sort of getting at is that in some places, we have moved the data further than in the, than in the aggregate, or than it, and just looking at the teacher workforce, if that makes any sense at all.
Right. And again, I know it's something that we have focused on over the years. It's just interesting to sort of see where the numbers were in 2019.
Yeah. And, and the great thing about the reports I've alluded to or referred to where we're pulling this data from, MSDE keeps them on their website for at least 10 years' worth. There might even be more than that. So, anyone who's interested can pull up any, any year within that timeframe and see how we're doing or anyone else has been doing over those periods of time. You can compare yourself, you know, your county to yourself year over year. And, and like I said, I was trying to get through these quickly, but we appreciate the conversation. I'll just give you one example of why we think this, this little success is significant, because it's not, I guess, the other, one of the other big ideas we're, we're trying to convey here is it's not simply about changing a number on a chart. I mean, that's sort of how it displays ultimately in a plan, as we update the strategic plan, but it's sort of the whole, the whole culture and context of an organization. And so, if this is an area that we've made some improvements and hopefully can continue to improve, that sort of sets that cultural tone. That says to a lot of people, for instance, maybe I'm a student of color in Carroll County who, who says, maybe someday I want to be an educator. And now, as opposed to not too many years ago, there, there are some examples to look to and say, okay, that's, that's perhaps a career path for me, and that's, that's a positive step forward, is, is sort of what I was suggesting.
Okay. And again, I think when we get a little farther back, that was, there's one slide coming up where I was, again, able to look at the student population, the breakdown of the student population by diverse groups, and sort of compare that to the staff population broken down in the same groups. I've compared those numbers. When you get back to the goals, I guess, one of the focus areas, when we're looking at retaining and recruiting and retaining highly qualified and diverse employees, again, I'm, I've sort of looked at the baseline data. That's a slide that's coming up a little bit later on, when we look at focus area one. Again, I know that we're trying to, you know, to match, to try to get the numbers for all of the diverse groups, to make sure that we have teachers and, and staff members who look like them. Everybody wants to have someone to identify with. So, I think as we try to, as we try to increase those percentages to get the, the teaching staff to sort of mirror the population of the students as best we can.
I think that's one of the key points that comes across on, on these grids, like, we've made a lot of progress on the, the principals and the supervisors grids, where, you know, the, the percentages of minority, you know, principals and supervisors fairly closely mirror our student population, but when you get down to the, the teacher category, that is definitely not the case.
Correct. And I, I'm having just the slightest bit of trouble hearing some of the things, some of the volume coming through, but I think what you were saying, and Dr. Dorsey was saying, is that slide is sort of the performance target coming up, and so, we will go through that in detail, unless you're asking to skip to that now, that's-
No, please don't. Continue as you are.
Okay. All right. Then we will, we will move forward, Bob, if you would. If you could go to the, pass the, there you go. Thank you. This is also some data that, that we monitor very closely internally as staff, but I do not believe that we've shared it before. I don't, I don't remember a time where we've had it as part of a, of a, of a Board of Ed presentation, and we thought it might be interesting to share this with you as well. And so, what, what we have here is on, you know, in two columns, all of our schools, and then the total staff members, complete total staff members in each of those facilities, each of those schools, and then the, in the last column for each school, the number of, of staff of color in those schools. And I, I would say that this, for me, over the course of a decade, these data are similar to the slides on principals or supervisors in that, you know, you, depending on, on your perspective, this, this may not be great, but it, it has moved forward from, from where it once was. And so, you know, that's very small, but measured progress. It's, it's absolutely something that we think is critical to grow for both recruitment and retention efforts, and Chantrus and Judy are going to talk about that, the strategies at the end. But there was a time not too many years ago where we had many more schools who, who would have been in the zero column for staff of color. I did, I did the math for you for my notes. There are now three schools with no staff members of color. There are six schools with just one, and there are seven schools with two. And I, I won't read the rest unless, or I won't do the summary of the rest unless you want me to. So, this has improved, believe it or not, over, over- So this has improved, believe it or not, over several years. But how it still presents challenges for us and why, you know, this isn't in the performance measure of the plan, these are internal data we work on. But why this is important is because it has ramifications for both recruitment and retention. And if you bear in mind that statewide context, we're competing for a fairly limited pool with all of our neighbors and all of our peers. And if I'm a teacher being recruited, it may be a decision point for me to say, well, you know, I'm not sure if I want to be the only staff member of color in a school. Or, you know, if I'm a teacher, we're fortunate enough to hire. Am I comfortable after my first year? Or is that a factor that is, you know, that is a concern for me and may make me make a decision to go to another school system in a future year? Also, a big thing for us, like, sort of one of the golden things we would like to crack somehow is to someday achieve a viable PDS or professional development school relationship with a college or university who can consistently send us prospective teachers of color and basically professional development school to really kind of just whittle it down for the sake of this discussion. What we're talking about is to have an ongoing relationship where we can place student teachers and interns, because we know from experience, every county knows from experience, when you can develop a PDS relationship and you can get those student teachers and interns, you have a very decent shot of then hiring them when they complete their degree. And that is something that Chantris works on and thinks about all the time. And so far, that's just not been something we've successfully been able to pull off. And as we have ongoing conversations with some of our institutions of higher education, the data you're seeing is sometimes something that they reference as to why there's some hesitancy to place student teachers, interns in our schools when we ask. Dr. Dorsey?
And again, I just want to clarify that what we're looking at now, though, is staff diversity. So it's all staff members, whether they're clerical or custodial. Is that true? Or is this just your faculty or your teaching staff?
I can't hear at all. I don't know if Judy or Chantris could hear. And if they can, they could answer.
I could not hear.
Dr. Dorsey wanted to know, and Bob will work on the sound. Is the chart representative of all staff in the school, including clerical, custodial?
On this end, there's still no audio.
Yeah, we're not able to hear you in the room.
All right, Bob's working on it. Hold one sec.
I'll send a chat.
I think we just regained audio, I believe.
Can you hear me, John?
Yes, yes, we can, Dr. La.
Dr. Dorsey, do you want to go ahead and repeat your question?
I was just wondering, this current slide, is it showing, it says staff diversity. Is it including all staff members, like clerical staff, custodial staff, the entire staff? Not just the teaching staff?
I'll ask, I believe that's correct, Dr. Dorsey. I'll ask Ms. Baptist to produce the data.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So this is based off of the entire staff, not just the educator staff within the buildings.
Mr. O'Neil, you mentioned a couple of the schools, several of the schools that had the lower numbers. You have three schools on here that have about 10%. Is there better retention there? Is there better recruiting there? Is that just kind of random, how that's shaking out? Or why would we have a couple with 10% and then a couple with zero?
I'll ask Ms. Baptist to fully confirm that. But Mr. Kyler, my belief is yes, retention is better in certain locations. And I'm not necessarily, you know, scientifically, I don't know that I could say in good conscience, I can absolutely say it's because of this one thing or this other thing. But what we do know from exit data, from conversations of all types, whether in groups or one-on-one with people, with teachers of color who we hire, recruit, and try to retain, is that they feel much more comfortable in a school that's more diverse. And that actually isn't too hard to understand, you know, for, I think, most people if you think about that. Chantris, I don't know if you
You're exactly correct, correct. So in regards to where we see the higher numbers of minority staff members is because of a higher retention effort that occur within those buildings as well as positions availability that become available within those buildings. Other staff members that are of minorities help us to attract new recruits to those buildings.
And Mr. Kyler, I really appreciate that question because that's sort of something that we're trying to convey here in the sense that when we say things like, we believe this work builds upon itself and over time can grow, you know, that's why it's very important for us to eventually change all of those zeros to something higher than zeros and move every one of these numbers forward because we believe that it does create school climates and environments where we can, you know, where we can hopefully begin to pick up the pace of our success and not just hire, but retain as well. And we talked a little bit about hiring and how when we get to those slides for Judy and Chantris, it's, in the composite, it's about the same as it was the year before, which was about the same as it was the year before that. Unfortunately, the same thing's true of retention. And it's not, you know, the ultimate goal here in the plan is to have a retention rate for our teachers of color or our employees of color that's the same or equivalent to the retention rate for our majority employees. Unfortunately, sort of what we've been seeing the last few years is, even as we hire, and not necessarily sort of cohort to cohort, but just overall, even as we hire, we tend to lose about the same number of employees in a given year that we've hired. And so that creates a churning and it kind of keeps the data somewhere where it's been. And we believe this is a significant place where that can build upon itself and begin to change that for us. Bob, next slide. This is a slide from the, not from the other two data reports I referenced, but from the original, every two years Maryland teacher staffing report that the MSD presents to the state board of ed. So again, this is now two years old and we're waiting for the update. But these are all of the institutions of higher ed or colleges and universities in Maryland who produce teacher candidates. These are the colleges that have approved certification programs from MSD. And the number of program graduates they each produced in the last reporting cycle. And you can see just on the whole, this is sort of the supply. We've talked about demand. This is sort of the supply aspect to our recruitment efforts we wanted to get at. Maryland has, at least not in recent historical memory, produced anywhere near enough teaching candidates, period, in the whole, to fulfill the needs of our 24 public school systems. For the sake of this conversation, in pillar three, we went ahead and highlighted the institutions in Maryland that are considered HBCUs or historically black colleges and universities. And that doesn't just mean that they typically produce African-American candidates. They typically do produce at a higher rate candidates of color. So all, many of those, many of those demographic subgroups that we were talking about earlier. And I also want to be clear, we clearly understand that it's, that, you know, every candidate who leaves an HBCU with a teaching degree is not necessarily a minority. And likewise, we fully understand that all of the other colleges and universities here also do produce minority or teachers of color. So that, you know, we just want to be clear that that's not what we're trying to get at by showing this. But, you know, in the whole, those are the colleges where we absolutely would love to develop some sort of, even if it's informal to start, some sort of a professional development school relationship. And we want to do that with everybody. And so, you know, even locally, we can have that conversation. But, you know, that would be a major goal that's sort of, you know, one of the strategies below what you see in the plan. And it's something we keep working at and working at. And so far, we just haven't been able to get very far with it. But those are the kinds of things that we typically don't have the time to talk about in this report. And we wanted to take a second or two to talk about it. And it's something that Chantris, just as part of, in addition to her job, she makes calls. I don't know, I don't want to be wrong, Chantris, but I would say monthly or every other month.
Once a month, I talk to all of the HBCUs.
I saw somebody's hand go up and then I didn't. I didn't see who it was.
I raised mine just to sort of say, I think location has a lot to do with the HBCUs in Carroll County. Because as much as I'm sure we'd love to have partnerships or the professional learning communities established with these colleges, we would have a challenge of getting the students to Carroll County, to our classrooms. So I'm sure that's something that you've looked at and are trying to address, maybe.
Yes, ma'am. So Dr. Dorsey, you are indeed correct. In regards to engaging with the HBCUs, transportation is an issue for those students to get to Carroll County Public Schools for those student internships. So we have even entered in some dialogue in regards to potential transportation sources for those students to see if we can engage them or have them to have the option and the ability to enter to student internships within Carroll.
And Chantris, with the Maryland-approved program graduates, you know, it says 2,759 here. And Mr. O'Neil, you had said that that's not enough to even, like, even with all of these, that's not enough to fill all the positions that we need across Maryland as a whole. Are there any neighboring states or states that are relatively close by that produce an excess number of teachers versus what they need to staff their schools?
Unfortunately, it's a national problem. So whereas no state is currently producing enough teachers and educators to support the needs of their retirements and resignations each year. So we all are, across the country, are struggling with finding educators, especially those educators of color.
And that compounds when you get into critical shortage areas. And for us and obviously all of Maryland, based on the goals of the state report, teachers of color as a group are identified as a critical shortage area. But maths and sciences and special ed, you know, even what's produced, this is rolled up in the aggregate, but even what's produced doesn't meet within categories. Those, you know, each critical area, whether it's a teacher of color or a certain certification area or a grade level. And so that's, you know, that's a profound challenge to begin with, just at the highest level. And then when you, you know, when you drill down to something that's set as a system goal and something we're, you know, we're desperately trying to overcome, it does make it harder. It was a lovely segue into the last thing I wanted to say before Chantris and Judy talk, President Savigny, which is, you know, hopefully what we were trying to get at here is to say, here's the context around teacher supply and demand. And this is a goal that we know you share and we certainly share. And a lot of people work on and worry about and stress over and try to figure out new and different ways to get at it. But it's in competition with everybody else for all the same candidates. And it's why, it's why work matters over time so that these things can build on themselves. And it's why every little thing matters, not just how many venues we've been to or what kind of retention efforts we've undertaken. Everything matters. Every advantage matters, and unfortunately, every disadvantage matters. So, you know, every person we hire who has a good experience in Carroll and adds to some of those charts and we can build around that, it's a great thing. But unfortunately, if somebody doesn't have a great experience with us for whatever reason and they leave us, that not only hurts our data and sort of framing a goal in terms of data, it's a bit of a step backwards as well in terms of the overall climate and culture and effort. And, you know, I guess what we're getting at is there's all of these things at play here. And it's not as simple as the data, you know, at the end of, at the end of the presentation on the strategic plan charts. And those are all of the things that so many people, and it's not just a human resources effort, and it's not just a Judy Jones effort. We have folks from teachers to many, many administrators in all different departments. And we have community partners, profound partners in the community who not just support us, but support us literally by spending hours on the recruitment trail with the teams that Chantris sends out as well. And we appreciate all of that effort. And I want to thank all of those people, those who are here and anyone who's watching, who happens to watch this now or later. All of that matters to us and we're deeply grateful for everything people do to lend their support. And the last couple of slides are the measures from the plan itself. So Judy and Chantris will talk about them. We do have a slide at the end that talks about next steps and challenges and kind of within the framework of the very thoughtful questions you've been asking. There are some ideas that we're tossing out there. And when we get to them and go through them, I just want to say upfront so that Judy and Chantris don't have to. This, tonight, is not a budget request because some of these items, you know, would have a dollar attached, a dollar figure attached to them. We're just putting them out there as concepts that we might think about as we continue to work with you on pillar three. So with that, I think, Chantris, you were going to do the first slide.
Next slide, Bob, please. Okay, so as John mentioned, the composite data for the recruitment and retention efforts have basically remained the same for the last few years at 4.8%. As we continue to strive to meet the focus of area one of pillar three, we recognize that we are slightly shy of our 5% minority staff percentage goal. There have been some adjustments across the categories. But overall, we are at the same place as an organization. This is consistent with the February staffing report the past few years where attrition of the teachers of color has been the same as the number of new hires. Essentially, we've been holding in the same place, but not advancing the data objectives very far. It's, in regards to, Dr. Dorsey, your comment earlier during the presentation in regards to having the number of staff members mirror those of the students of color within our system, that is always has been our objective. We know that we have to take moderate steps in regards to achieve and build upon the program. But ultimately, that is our objective, to have the, our staff mirror the percentages of those staff, of those of our students. Next slide, Bob.
But Chantris, Bob, could you go back real quick? Just wanted to add, that target for 2020, that's been the out-year target. So we haven't met it. We've been sort of in the same place in the composite data. So we've just pushed that to the next year. That's how this has been progressing, in case you're, you know, you were wondering, trying to remember from last year. And, you know, what we were saying at the start of this is we actually would recommend that we not change that. That's a significant goal to have. And it's significant that we try to achieve it. And it's important that we talk about when we do or don't achieve it or how far we make it. But we're not suggesting that we change that or say, well, that's apparently unattainable, so maybe we should lower that a little bit. We don't believe that at all, but we're willing to have that conversation. And then as far as the data, because what you, you know, unfortunately, you'd have to pull last year's report to look at them side by side because last year's data becomes the baseline. The year before, as Chantris mentioned, it was the same. Actually, for Caucasian employees, it was an identical percentage of 95.2%. For employees of color, in the whole, it was 4.8%. And it is, again, it's just that there were some fluctuations within each of the categories, but it adds up to the same thing. And if you, you know, if you, as you're having your discussion tonight, if you want to know what any of those individual percentages were last year, we have them here and can share them out loud with you if that's something you're interested in.
And John, I just want to say, I completely agree with that sentiment. I mean, I know if you look through our strategic plan, there are a bunch of places where we have made good progress. This is not one of them, right? Where we haven't made a whole lot of progress on that target. But I don't think we should ever take the stance of, well, that seems to be a little too difficult to hit, so we'll back off on that one. I absolutely don't think that's the way to go. I agree with you that we leave it at the 5%. We recognize that that is still a goal and continuing to climb in the out-years. But I think we might have to take a step back and think long and hard about how do we actually focus some of the activities of the strategic plan initiatives to make sure that we start making progress on this particular metric.
We appreciate that, President Savigny. In fact, that's our sentiment. We shouldn't do anything except double down on this and work harder and try harder. The last slide here tonight, we'll talk about a couple of strategies that maybe could move us a little further more quickly than where we've been.
Next slide, Bob. So last year, during the presentation, the board requested information in regards to the number of candidates of color which apply to the system. Whereas in accordance with the Department of Labor guidelines, we cannot require applicants to self-identify their minority status. We have added that as a category. We have added that as a category, and we saw that 1.25% of the applicants were willing to complete that and note that they were of a minority classification. Again, our goal, we aligned our baseline objective with 5%, which aligns with our recruitment and retention efforts of 5%. However, we do know that we will not hire every minority applicant for a wide range of reasons that will apply to the system. And ultimately, to hopefully move the baseline or move the needle, we would probably need around 15% of our applicants to be of minorities, ethnicities, or race in regards to help us move our staffing recruitment needle.
So, so again, just to kind of reiterate what Chantress said there, this is a difficult measure to have because, you know, to repeat Chantress, by law, we can't have you, we can't ask you to fill out your, your personal demographics as part of the application. We can only separate that data sheet from the application so that it's, you know, ultimately, it's anonymous. And ask you to voluntarily fill out an EEOC form when you apply. And so it's not, you know, it's not 100% scientific or fail-proof because it has to be voluntary by law. So I guess what I'm saying is, we know there's, you know, there's a little bit of variance in there, but we also still think it's important data to try to capture as best we can and as lawfully as we can. And so we wouldn't, we wouldn't suggest changing that either.
Next slide, Bob. So in regards to our challenges and next steps, where does this leave us moving forward? The reality is that we are having a very difficult time moving the needle forward to achieve the outcome we ultimately desire. This is not a situation where people are not working hard. Many people are working tirelessly on this initiative. We have excellent community partners who are out there recruiting for us, willing to attend recruiting events, and spending generous amounts of their time and energy and helping us hopefully move this needle. And we are increasing our capacity and making many strides. For instance, Judy will tell you that we see some amazing steps for inequity professional development occurring at our schools and giving voices to our students of color. And we are already discussed, excuse me, discussed our success and promotions to leaderships for our staff members of color. But these things are not disconnected or random strategies for success. They are all interrelated, and they all matter as a part of our overall equity program. And they are all, take lots of time to take root and then grow and ultimately expand our numbers to build upon themselves and help us to meet those objectives of having our staff population near that of our student population. So even when we are making progress in some ways, there may be a few steps backwards in other ways. It may be a while before we began to see that translate into significant improvement in our overall staffing demographics. And as much as we believe and want to proclaim our recent focus and commitment to equity, climate, and culture, it will take time and effort for this to translate directly into some of the strategies we have discussed to improve our staffing demographics.
Right. So here, board members, we'll have Chantress and Judy just kind of briefly touch on each of these bullets. I just want to say, before they do that, I draw that line that I mentioned about this. This is not a budget request tonight by any means. It's meant to be some ideas that could hopefully engender some discussion, other ideas that you might have. But those last two items, you know, I did want to make that point. That's, that's what I was referring to. Those items would obviously have a cost associated with them. And again, we're not, we're not asking you to vote on, vote on this or vote on that this evening. We're just saying, as we continue to think about the strategic plan and in particular, pillar three and work on things, these are some things we really think it's probably important to start to bear in mind because, you know, Chantress just gave an impassioned discussion of the work and trying to move it forward. We believe these last two things, and there might be others, but we believe these last two things would require an investment. But ideas like this might be something to accelerate that, that pace a little more quickly than where we've been. So, I don't know, Judy and Chantress, if you wanted to just clarify what each of these bullets mean, that would be great.
Sure. So in regards to the return to our full set of recruitment and retention strategies following pandemic, we plan to reengage with our staff members of color. We have a mentor program, which is, it has been conducted virtually through Zoom. However, we do know that there is something left unsaid about in regards to interacting physically, face-to-face. And so we will then reconnect our staff members with their mentors physically so that they can engage. We have some outstanding engagement programs where as we meet, we go out to greet. We have social programs with our staff members of colors so that they can become a part and really feel a part of the CCPS community. Ms. Jones and myself, multiple times throughout the year, we go and visit with each of our staff members of colors to make sure that they know that we are there for them if they should ever face challenges or need any types of guidance or support. So those are things that we will really reengage with following pandemic. We will continue with our recruitment and retention efforts, recruiting again at our diverse events. As we all know, the pandemic placed a significant hold on recruitment and place recruitment, and personal recruitment with all schools, not only our HBCUs. But we have targeted for the HBCUs that, through their building of their relationships, that we will have our own targeted recruitment day at the local HBCUs where we can hopefully engage with their students more. So we hope to build upon that following the pandemic as we get to engage with them. In regards to improvement of our culture and our equity through the employee professional development, I'm going to hand that off to Judy. I know Judy has done a lot with our professional leadership in regards to training and efforts in regards to equity and helping our staff members approach very difficult conversations in regards to equity.
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening, board members. Yes, as Chantress stated, the Office of Equity and Inclusion continues to be dedicated to improving the qualitative experiences of our teachers and employees of color. We know that when inclusion is in place, meaning that our members feel welcome, they feel respected, and they feel seen, that that also helps them decide whether I feel that I'm at home. And I remember not too long ago, we had the theme that we wanted them to come and stay in Carroll County, not just visit us, but to stay. Thankfully, over the summer, we did have a few impromptu courageous conversation sessions to kind of help what was going on in our community and in our world as a whole. It was a place where people felt like they just needed to come together and talk. The good thing about that was many of our employees of diverse backgrounds and positions were a part and were able to share stories, personal narratives, and real bonding took place over the summer along with our book clubs. And we also had an opportunity as a department to have courageous conversations through the professional learning opportunities offered through the curriculum and instruction department over the summer. And we got a chance to meet a lot of new teachers of color, staff of color, who took place in these discussions. What pulls them and draws them in is the fact that we are a school system that allows time for that. We are a school system that have shown that this is a priority of ours, that we will not run away from the difficult conversations, but in fact, we are willing and open to gaining and hearing multiple perspectives, that we believe in providing a safe and brave space for people to share their personal narratives and stories. Because this training has been going on continuously and consistently across the board within our school systems, with our administrators, with our teachers, with our supervisors, it changes the environment. And people are, again, beginning to feel welcomed and a part because we're, again, having the conversations. So we're going to continue with that because that is a key part of the success that we're seeing. So we're trying to, again, build the capacity so that we improve the qualitative experiences of our teachers of color. And the third bullet talks about providing leadership opportunities. And that's also done in several ways to the capacity that my office can do so. So I may give teachers or staff of color opportunities to help facilitate the courageous conversations. Many of them were a part of facilitators for the summer book club that was successful. Many of them are facilitating in the role of equity liaisons. Many have stepped up to be mentors and sponsors for our student voice that represents students of color, which we now have at every high school and every middle school. I'm proud to say. That doesn't mean that it's only teachers of color. But again, they see that, and they see that as a priority in our school system. And that sends a very strong and powerful message. But just giving them these little opportunities, whether they're presenting at a culture expo, a culture chat, whether they're just attending it, it then builds their confidence to say, you know what, I do want to seek other positions in the school system. I'm vested in this school system that is vested in me, and they see me as an individual, and they see me for my difference, and they respect that and they appreciate that. So we will continue to offer stepping stone positioning opportunities to grow, for them to network, and for them to feel that they are needed and wanted in our CCPS school system. So I think we're doing great strides in doing that. And yes, a little support with, with the last bullets would definitely help us be able to launch those efforts even further.
And in regards to bullet four, the supporting of the system for recruitment, retention, and equity efforts, we will ultimately like to place, in those schools where we see lower number of minority educators or staff, we would like to place two or more members so that, and again, going back to that self-identification of seeing others that look like you within the building provides an additional sense of comfort within your operational, your work status. So ultimately, we are doing more strategic focus on placement of recruits and staff members, trying to build up those buildings, school locations that have a decreased or a lower number, to try to put two or more people of color in those buildings so that we can enhance their experience within CCPS as well. In regards to considering an alternative certification program, we're working with our supervisors because for those individuals that may have graduated with a teaching certificate or a math degree, but may not be certified, we're working with our supervisors to identify quality talent, quality educator talent, and help them to become certified in the specific areas which is needed within the system to support our students and our staffing needs. So those will require some type of financial investment, but at this time, we're not at the point of which we have quantified that. And so, but we are giving more thought, consideration of how to build our staff, how to recruit, retain, and expand upon our candidate pool through their certification programs themselves.
Thank you, Chantress. And board members, if you'll indulge me for just one more minute, I promise. Those last two bullets to add some of my own perspective to it, some ways in which that could look, because it doesn't have to just be, you know, an additional staff person, although I would say that's a way that would interest me, that, you know, if there's ever a grant opportunity available or if there's a time when the Board of Ed returns to focusing in on some important system initiatives and maybe in the future, once again, drawing a little fund balance to fund something upfront, I certainly would endorse some support for Judy and Chantress and some connection between their offices to really try to have somebody who's more of their full-time effort can be on these initiatives. That would be great. But it also could be something like, we could, we could have the flexibility to have some limited number of open contract opportunities that might give us a leg up on hiring because we could maybe reach out to some mid-year graduates or very early in the spring graduates and say, you know, this is so important to us in Carroll County that we want to offer you this open contract. Even if that, even if that were to mean that in one given fiscal year, you know, we might have a couple of more FTE than we otherwise would have planned in the budget. Overall, that would wash out over time with natural attrition. But it would, you know, something like that's sort of a, if not an advantage, at least an equal playing field with their counterparts around Maryland to be able to be the first person to reach that candidate and offer a position, knowing that there's a little expense there, a budgetary expense, but it could balance itself out over a fiscal year. And then an alternative certification program, that's, that's a different, that's a program, and that would take some time to develop and some work. It's not something that could be stood up in a moment's notice. But it, you know, the concept there, the reason we're thinking about that or at least having a discussion is, it's allowable under Maryland regulation. And there's a point that Dr. Dorsey made earlier that's been in my mind for some time when we were talking about the Maryland HBCUs. It is hard to develop that relationship. And there's any number of reasons why that's, why that's proving very, very difficult. And geography or proximity is one of those. This is, you know, for lack of a more sophisticated way of saying it, this is a way to kind of create your own professional development system, you know, right here in Carroll County. And most likely, based on the state regulations, that would be a program developed in concert with a college or university. And it could be one local. It doesn't, you know, it wouldn't have to be an HBCU in Maryland or a school somewhere else. You could develop an alternative certification program with McDaniel, for instance, if that was something that both CCPS and McDaniel were interested in. And there's been no conversation with them. So if they're watching, which is probably not true, they shouldn't be concerned. But, but, you know, that might be a more, you know, that would certainly be a more dramatic way to say, hey, we want to try to do something to move this ball down the field a lot quicker than where we've been the last few years. So with that, we'll conclude. I only want to say, I thank a lot of people in general. I can't thank Chantress and Judy enough for their endless efforts on this. And not only their work, but keeping me focused and constantly saying to me, hey, what are you doing to support this? And how are you thinking about this and helping? Or trying to help. So thank you to the two of them immensely. And with that, we'll take any questions or comments that you have.
I was just going to ask again about the open contracts. I thought we had been offering open contracts in the past.
We have, but it's very limited, and I'm not sure if we've done it recently. In the, in the years where we were really pinched budgetarily, Dr. Dorsey, it became very hard to do more than a handful. And I guess the best way to say it is, we've tried, we not only tried, we have been very careful to only offer open contracts in scenarios where we knew there was absolutely no way, no risk that we could exceed our budget at FTE. And so that cuts down some flexibility. It might mean that, you know, Chantress, Judy, whoever's at a recruitment fair, and they have this excellent candidate in front of them, they have to, and Chantress, if this is wrong, correct me, but how it works now is sort of, I have to call back to Chantress and say, hey, how does it look in the area of social studies? Because I have this excellent person in front of me who we should be hiring. And Chantress would say, well, based on projections for retirements or natural attrition, we can't, we can't do that. We can't make that offer. Is that accurate, Chantress?
You're indeed accurate. That's exactly how it works. Currently, the open contracts still, we still work within the confinement of our FTE count for the year.
And, and Dr. Dorsey, we're not suggesting go crazy with it. And there'd have to be, I mean, if that's something that the board wants to discuss and delve into, that could be done not tonight, but in the future. And it would have to, you know, it couldn't be limitless. We understand that. But, but we've been, I guess I would say, we've been much more confined than our, than our competing neighbors. And opening that up a little bit could help.
Well, the word of the last couple of months has certainly been flexibility, right? So I'd certainly be willing to have those discussions as part of the budget development process this year of talking about what we could potentially do and what flexibility we might be able to provide. Or, you know, because you don't want to miss out on those windows of opportunity. So, board members, does that make sense to kind of have that in context of the next, you know, as we're starting to build the next budget? I'm seeing nods.
And I think, Bob, you could probably take the slides down. I appreciate your help tonight. President Savigny, I think that could be timely because if- President Savigny, I think that could be timely because if I'm correct, without looking it up, I think the strategic plan reporting cycle calls for us to be back in February with the next bill or three update. So that fits right into the, right to the middle of the budget development process.
Have there been any success in recruiting out of the state of Maryland? Are there any spots that seem to be successful? You know, you got to look at a spot where people want to move to Maryland first and Carroll County, more importantly. But how has that been?
Sure. So Mr. Kyler, we do recruit out of the state in a normal pre-pandemic world. So we have, and we have seen some success as recently as Mr. Anderson was able to attract us a great candidate from the University of Virginia. So we are, we do recruit and there was a student of color. So we, in a pre-pandemic world, we do have those opportunities to recruit out of state. And we do try to attend HBCUs or schools that produce a higher number of students of color more frequently than others.
And whenever we hire someone, we talk to them and say, hey, who do you know who's graduating next year? It's really hard. You know, a lot of people say, do you use teachers in recruitment? And we do, but that's difficult in some, it's limited because you can't pull, especially a new teacher, an induction time period teacher out of the class too many times to take them on recruitment trips. So that's kind of a, you know, that's a blessing and a curse, depending on how much you want to venture into that. But we, you know, we try all of those things and we'll go as far as the staff cars can travel. If there's a venue that'll, you know, that'll produce something for us, we're happy to do that.
But again, I have seen that be successful as far as using a new teacher to help out with the recruiting efforts. Just seems like they can relate really well to the prospective candidates.
You're all invited, by the way, to attend. And it could be local and being serious, any recruitment venue when the world reopens in Maryland, feel free to, Chantris can get the schedule to you next spring and feel free to join us if you want. We won't make you work, but you can observe how recruitment venue goes. And you certainly can greet folks and interview them if you'd like. So feel free to come along and see what it's like when you're at one of these venues. That's fine. And then, you know, unless you have other questions, just want to say thank you very much for your time tonight. I know that the hour's late, but we're appreciative of that and appreciative of your support and you telling us to stay with us, that we're not going to move backwards.
Thank you for your efforts. Very much appreciate it.
Their efforts. Thank you.
Thanks very much, John, Chantris and Judy. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you so much. Important work.
All right. So Dr. Lockard, that brings us up to item 6C, the report of the COVID-19 fiscal impact. And did you just want to kick that off real quickly before we bring Chris up?
Yes. You'll recall in September, we began reporting monthly on the fiscal impact of COVID-19. Mr. Hartlove has provided this update for November. He's here to answer any questions. Since last month, we had about $500,000 in additional spending, mainly in the areas of PPE and related equipment such as Plexiglas and air filtration units. Mr. Hartlove?
Yes, board members, I'll just open it up for any questions. This is a similar report to last month as the superintendent mentioned. It's, we're breaking down the expenses into kind of three major areas. That's expenses related to instruction, those related to plant operations and maintenance, and then our food service area. Most of the new things that we're hitting right now are, the new expenses that we're incurring right now are for plant operations and maintenance items, PPE, air filtration systems, Plexiglas, glass barriers. And it's all really in the ramping up as we've been bringing, slowly bringing students back to, into the buildings. It's really geared towards that. Most of the instructional costs, they're starting to kind of flatten a little bit because they were really more tied to the virtual and getting that kicked off over the summer. So certainly try to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Hartlove, one thing I have been hearing a lot from some of the high schoolers is, are their computers coming in still?
I know that we're, that the entire world is ordering computers and we're competing with everyone. So I guess Mr. Davis would be more qualified to say exactly when we're going to get them, but I know it's getting closer.
Yes, they've actually started arriving. We got the first three pallets arrived this week. We're expecting 160 pallets. They actually, the order time was fluctuating from November to February to January to December. And so we were pleasantly surprised that they actually started arriving in early November. So we're working on the plans. We've worked with Mr. King to, and he's identified a group of representatives from the schools that we're working with to identify, create plans for the distribution and the whole process that will go about with, for getting the laptops out.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. It's good to hear.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, you said it was three out of 160 that we've gotten so far?
Three pallets out of 160, but they're coming in gradually, you know, like gradually. That was just the first batch that came in this week. So we're expecting them, you know, over the following weeks. Hopefully, you know, most of them by the end of November, if not early December.
Okay, so we are expecting them to come in fairly quickly and regularly over the next couple of weeks. It's not like we just got that one shipment and that's all we're going to get for a while.
That's the way it's looking right now, that it's kind of, things have kind of broken loose. And like I said, you know, we have to work on the process of getting them integrated into the, into our system and imaged and all that. And then the process for how we will distribute and get them to the students.
Board President Savigny, I wanted to note that one of those increased costs Mr. Hartlove referenced was for the air filtration units. Those are the portable units. That's actually the second purchase and we made that in part following the last discussion where you had referenced that as an item. So after that board meeting, for a couple of reasons, I asked Mr. Prokop and Mr. Hartlove to go ahead and double the supply to each school. And I think they're arriving. And so, you know, maybe that gives us some flexibility with some employees or certain areas of schools where, you know, hopefully it could be an inducement for someone who's virtual to return. Also, we made that purchase specifically to help us with our cleaning protocol when we have a known exposure in a classroom space. We don't like to pull the, that's a resource that right now is dedicated to health suites and isolation rooms, health suite isolation areas. And we don't like to pull that unless we have to. And so this gives us an opportunity as part of the ventilation and cleaning protocol to get those spaces addressed sooner and back online, hopefully by the next school day. So that's, I think, Chris, that's probably the biggest purchase addition here.
It is, because I believe the first was kind of a beta test and they worked well. So then we doubled up in order for more.
Great. Okay. Yeah, because it looks like we had about an additional $500,000 expenditure from last month and more than half of that was due to the air filtration systems.
Correct.
Okay.
And I will mention, as I did last month, we are actively working with the county and our colleagues down at MSDE to try to identify other items for reimbursement. The county also has some dollars that they have available that we've, they've been directed some of that towards us. So that's been very helpful as well. So we're, the goal is to, you know, get as much of this paid for out of other sources, out of our operating budget or normal operating stream of revenue as possible.
And Chris, what about like interventions and tutoring and those sort of grant dollars that have been made available? Will they start, will we start seeing that come across on this report?
The tutoring is paid for out of a grant. It's that same area where you see the jumpstart. That is, but we haven't, we haven't seen a lot of that hit our account yet. That's why it's not showing it as of now. We still have to discuss how we're going to address the additional substitutes, teachers that we're bringing in and so on, some of the other staffing items. We're going to talk about how we integrate that into this report as well. The challenge with things like, with like substitutes, for instance, is identifying whether a substitute is one that's specifically needed because of COVID over and above what we would use normally, or if it's just a normal substitute. Because we have, we do have a budget in normal years for substitute teachers. So trying to kind of pull those items out, same thing with custodial, additional custodial help. You know, we've used hourly custodians in the past, trying to differentiate when it's a normal use of a custodian versus something that's just driven from this crisis can be challenging.
And Chris, President Savigny, to further expand on what Chris said. Chris, I believe it's about $420,000 tutoring dollars that we then work with school directors to go ahead and disseminate out to all schools. And the directors had the great idea of providing per pupil expenditure viability. I believe school plans were turned in on October 30th with the intention of that tutoring taking place through November up till the winter holiday break.
And the challenge with that is that, you know, the good news is that they give us the dollars. The bad news is that they say you have to have them all spent by December 31st. So in addition to all the other things we're doing, Jason's out there trying to come up with ideas quickly and execute them quickly. And we've been very happy that I think we're spending the dollars wisely and quickly.
Board members, back to Chris's previous point. You know, we've been hiring in a historically different way and at a historically different level and in some cases, just to try to meet the staffing needs with the school's opening hybrid. In some cases, that hiring has become to replace the people, you know, some of the people we hired in the first place to try to meet those needs. So there's a lot to that. There's a lot of, there's a lot to try to monitor. And I made sure I gave Chris the task of saying, hey, you've got to be, you've got to account for all of this somehow because, you know, we need to be able to monitor that. And that's a very, very difficult task and I know that. So where we are with that internally, and if you're not okay with this, you can let us know now or at a future meeting. Because of what he was explaining about how it's hard to pull, you know, this custodian or that substitute out and say, this is a specific COVID cost that, you know, needing this person, that's almost impossible to do. What I've asked Chris and his folks to do is just monitor the major budget categories and sensed Dr. Lockard and I have read flags when we get to a point where we're saying, oh, wow, the projections for the remaining fiscal year in this major, you know, this 13-state category, this major category is starting to become concerning. So that's how we intend to approach that internally and in discussions with you. If that's acceptable to all of you, that's wonderful. If you would, you know, if there's a different way in which you would like to talk about that, we can do that now or at a future meeting as well.
I think that makes sense. Is everybody else okay with that? Well, thanks for pointing that out, both John and Chris, but I think that makes a lot of sense in order to track it that way.
That's how we'll move forward then.
Great.
Any other questions?
Board members, any other questions for Chris? All right. Thanks, Mr. Hartlove.
You're welcome.
All right. And I'm going to assume that we don't have anybody else for the second set of public participation at this late hour. Okay, and that will move straight into section eight, the action items. And board members, I need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, there are three appointments for approval. First, I'm very pleased to bring the appointment of Mr. Curtis Pierce to the position of Coordinator of School Security. You'll recall, this is one of the positions we prioritized during the last budget process to provide some assistance to Mr. Williams. Mr. Pierce has a distinguished career in law enforcement, including having served himself as a school resource officer in Maryland. So we're very pleased that he brings that experience and perspective to this role and our system. I'll go ahead and provide you with the other two and then any feedback there. The next important appointment is Laura Pierce, no relation to Curtis, to the role of school psychologist. This is due to fill a vacancy. Ms. Pierce has experience in Maryland as a school psychologist and we're happy to have her join Carroll County Public Schools. And finally, last but not least, I'm pleased to bring you the appointment of Ms. Kristi Rep to the role of Acting Principal at Sykesville Middle. Ms. Rep has been an outstanding assistant principal in Carroll County Public Schools, moving over from Northwest Middle. She meets all the qualifications and we're very pleased that she was prepared to fit immediately into the principalship at Sykesville Middle to fill a vacancy there. So there's the three appointments I bring for your approval.
Board members, any questions?
No, just congratulations to Mr. Williams for enhancing his staff. So now instead of an office of one, it'll be an office of two?
That's right.
Exciting times. All right, then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now, board members, we need a motion for the approval of the transaction items.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
Board members, we have just one transfer on the personnel transaction report, which is detailed in the agenda item.
Board members, any questions?
Nope.
All right, then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we need a motion for the approval of the personnel action items.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, on the monthly personnel action item, agenda item, we have 13 new hires, one release from contract, two leaves of absence and one increase in FTE. And they're all outlined in the agenda package.
Board members, any questions?
So I see we have one nurse that we were able to get for a floater?
Yes.
And this is definitely more activity than we normally see at this time of year. And that is because of the situation that we're in.
That's correct.
But we would expect to see a little bit more activity over the next couple of months in general.
Yep.
Board members, any questions? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and board members, now we need a motion for the approval of the award of bids.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Lockard?
Board members, you'll be happy to know that there's only one item on the award of bids this evening. This is a piggyback award on a state contract to provide services to inspect, clean and repair fuel oil tanks as required by MDE.
Board members, questions? And Mr. O'Neil or Mr. Hartlove, this is a typical expense that's always included as part of the budgetary expenses in a given year, correct?
Correct. So we're required to, well, there's Ray. Ray can explain it. He seems eager to speak. He's muted, however.
It's getting late. So, yeah, it's an anticipated expense. It's actually more frequent, typically more frequently. I guess MDE is a little behind on their inspections, but these are for the underground storage tanks. We have six. Winfield, we intend to replace when we do that HVAC project. We'd like to get out of the ground with fuel oil. It's been a concerted effort over the years. It's been a concerted effort over the years.
And is there any unexpected change in this expense? Has it grown more than we would expect, given the current circumstances? Or is it coming in about as expected?
Well, that's a tough one to put your finger on because it is a... The criteria changes. The environmental criteria changes, the types of equipment changes, the materials themselves change with these tanks. So it's a little tough to say. It's based on the fact that it's for five tanks. I don't see it as an exorbitant amount. I mean, it didn't shock us too greatly.
But it's to your, I think, specific question. It's not new costs. It's going to be covered out of the plant maintenance or plant operations budget.
Right, right.
Board members, any other questions? Then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we need a motion for the approval of the 2020 ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, I'm going to hand this right off to Mr. Anderson to provide you a brief summary of the annual consolidated plan.
Yeah, brief summary of a 300 to 400 page document, depending on the day. Yeah, thanks for the illustration, President Sivik. This is an annual plan that we are required to submit. And essentially, what it's doing is it's holding CCPS accountable to make certain that we're providing equitable access to resources to support our diverse learners. And that could be students that are needing intervention, students that are needing enrichment, building the capacity of our teachers, our leaders, and providing support and assistance to our economically disadvantaged students. Our first submission was done on October 15th. We only received three suggestions from the state. I attribute that to the fantastic facilitation of Dr. Kendra Hart, who was with us this evening. And I asked her to be available to answer any questions that you may have. But I also want to take this time also to thank Michelle Caves for her outstanding leadership and facilitation and development of this plan as well. So, board members, if you have any questions, we're here to answer those.
Board members? So Mr. Anderson, this was a massively overhauled plan, like version of the consolidated master plan that was developed for the first time last year?
So no, actually, the master plan has been something that's been worked since I've been in public education for a long period of time. And they renamed it to a... When ESSA was approved, they renamed it to Consolidated Strategic Plan, which is very much in line with our own strategic plan. Or we could say our own strategic plan is very much in line with the ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan and what needs to be required, what we're measuring. And so this is something that is a cumulative effort across our school system. We have all different types of content supervisors working on this. We have our financial team working on this. We have student services working on this. So it's just a group effort. And again, it was led and facilitated by Dr. Hart.
Right, and I guess I probably didn't state that as well. But I mean, they changed it basically to the header of the ESSA Strategic Plan.
Yeah.
Last year was the first time that that...
Yeah, back in the day, it was just called the Master Plan.
Have there been significant updates, given the fact that we're in the middle of a very different school year this year than typical? I know that this... Last year, we were very excited about how this was very closely tied to our own strategic plan. But were there enhanced, significant enhancements or differences that needed to be made to this because of the school year that we find ourselves in?
That's a great question. Dr. Hart, do you want to respond to that question?
Good evening, everyone. There were no significant changes as far as, you know, what the expectations are. There are no waivers. So right now, everything is business as usual as far as what we are expected to do for and with our students. So no, there are no significant changes for any accommodations or any waivers for anything that's required of us.
And as Dr. Hart said so well, the expectations were the same even during this difficult time. This was still very much a priority of all of us.
Yes.
There we go. I'd just like to add my thanks, Dr. Hart, and the folks that worked on this. I know this is a lot of putting together and a lot of, you know, what we're required to do. I appreciate all the work that went into this.
Board members, anything else? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and now we need a motion for the approval of the 2021-2022 school calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kyler.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, we're returning the proposed 2021-2022 school calendar for action. It was first presented at the September meeting. The release of the proposed calendar elicited a lot of good public feedback, a large amount of public feedback, much of which was focused on the best date for the first day of school next year. So last month, October, at the meeting, in a report, we provided a revised proposal for discussion, which was also released for public comment. The revisions created a calendar for the 2021-22 school year, which has the first official day as Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. And so that is the revised proposal we're bringing to you for action this evening. And here's hoping that 21-22 is a great school year that is fairly uninterrupted and consistent.
And everybody in person.
I'm really hoping this Friday, because this Friday is Friday the 13th, just all of a sudden, everything goes, oh, we're all going to be good. And everything goes downhill. It'd be great. Downhill in a good way.
Well, we're hoping that even if we have to mask up or whatever, that we're all able to be in person on the first day of school next year on September 8th.
That would be great.
And Dr. Lockard, I wanted to throw just another item for discussion out there. I know that... I believe this is a good calendar. We got feedback. We were able to adjust it accordingly. And I think this is actually a very good calendar for next year. One of the things that we had also discussed was the number of emergency closing days and how those would be built into the calendar. And right now, this has three days built in. And I know that we've been saying that, well, you know, with all the experience that we've gained during COVID, that, you know, we might not actually have to have snow days. We might be able to make those virtual instead. And we got a lot of feedback on both sides of that, actually. And I think there were a lot of insightful comments being made about how difficult it would be to transition to a virtual day at the drop of a hat. You know, different things from the community, people saying, oh, you know, you got to give the kids the joy of the random snow day every once in a while. And I think there were a lot of really good comments on both sides of that argument. But I wanted to throw out as a possible suggestion that maybe we, instead of maybe jumping immediately to making them all virtual and not having any more snow days, maybe we still continue to build in two to three days every year, and we use those as actual snow days. But then maybe once we get past that second or third day, then we contemplate going to virtual days.
I, for one, think that's a great compromise. Who doesn't? Kids and adults love a good snow day now and then. But it allows us to then also not have to go deep into June if we get, you know, beyond the built-in days. So I think that's a great compromise.
Board members, any thoughts on that? Do you think...
Yeah, I think individual snow days, and we haven't had a lot lately. I really don't think it's fair to the students or the teachers to have to drop back and punt that morning. And, you know, sometimes they need that day off. Now, I think if we get a hard winter, if we get a storm that, which we haven't seen in years, that schools close three, four consecutive days, then maybe we need to do it.
You just jinxed it, Mr. Kyler.
You just jinxed this.
You spoke it into happening.
I'm sorry.
You just jinxed.
You jinxed it.
Yeah, 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 you know. It's interesting. We get a Millersville weather forecaster every December that gives us his predictions, and he's pretty good. And I haven't heard him yet. It's not there. But yeah, no. But if it happens, I think virtual is a great tool to use if that happens.
If we blow into the, blow past the three days and keep going further?
Yes.
Okay. And that, I mean, that's not going to stop us from, you know, approving this calendar. I think it can just be future discussion about how we plan to address those emergency closing days. Board members, any other questions or comments on the calendar as it's now proposed?
Well, again, thanks for, again, adjusting the first day of school and looking at the number of instructional days for each month. I think that it really works out quite well. There used to be a time when people felt like, you know, we had too many interrupted weeks during a month. But this looks good for every month.
That was one of the main goals, was to try to create some consistent interruption-free stretches. And we sure can use that moving forward, so.
Absolutely. All right, then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and last but not least, we need a motion for the approval of the eligibility for extracurricular activities.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
The board members, with some changes to the extracurricular athletic schedule that we've already, you know, agreed upon and coming up, we needed to consider the eligibility requirements for students. We know that extracurriculars athletics are sometimes the draw that keeps our kids engaged. And so we wanted to make sure that we took into account the challenges that we've faced this year and the challenges that our students have faced. We don't want to penalize students, particularly out of the gate, if that's something that athletics is something that'll get them engaged. We certainly want to hold students to a standard moving forward for eligibility. But Ms. McCabe has put together a draft, bringing that for your approval. These are temporary revisions to the existing eligibility requirements for athletics. So Ms. McCabe?
Yes. So you'll see in your... In the paperwork you have there, we've bulleted out some changes just for this time period. And so basically, what we're saying is that everyone would be eligible for winter, for the winter season that starts December 7th. That's when practices start. But then we're saying with the second quarter report card that is to be distributed on February 9th, starting with that report card, that will determine eligibility for fall extracurricular activities. So beginning with this report card, in order for a student to be eligible, they must maintain a 2.0 grade point average, which is a C average, and have no failing grades, no Fs. This is the same eligibility requirement that we've had in the past. So the biggest change here is that we've given a time period for this winter season that all students are eligible just because of all of the changes and challenges that presented themselves during this time of hybrid instruction. The other change would be attendance. Because of hybrid instruction and because some students are virtual, we wouldn't be looking at a day-to-day attendance issue because students, the way we're accounting for attendance has some lag time built into it, has a day of lag time built into it, actually. And so we wouldn't be looking at day-to-day attendance. But what we could look at is some kind of, or some type of weekly or monthly attendance rate that would be expected of each student in order for them to participate. Any questions?
Ms. McCabe, I'm glad to hear about the potential addition of the ongoing attendance rate, right? Like, I agree with the, you know, waiving these requirements for the winter season that starts on December 7th, given all of the struggles. And, you know, we don't want to take away the thing that might just very well get some of our struggling students re-engaged in the process. I think that makes a lot of sense. But I also feel like they need to be putting forth an effort and have had some sort of accountability in terms of, okay, they have to be making an effort and they have to be attending on at least a certain percentage of days in order to be qualified, right? Like, it can't be that they just completely blew it off and disengaged, and now they get a free pass. So at least that's my gut feel on these board members. Your thoughts or comments? Everybody's tired.
No, I think it's well-written and makes sense. And I like the addition of the attendance thing also. You know, you need to have some level of accountability. And I guess the only concern would be, like everything this year, we need to be flexible enough, depending on what happens in December and in January, and maybe revisit this, which I hope we don't have to.
Absolutely.
I'm not going to jinx you twice in a row.
So Ms. McCabe, would we be... Can we approve this, knowing that we generally agree with the concept, but that we might be adding sort of an ongoing attendance or a monthly attendance requirement?
Yes, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Duffy if he wants to add anything to that or discuss, you know, ideas for an attendance rate and how often we might look at that and its practicality.
Why, thank you, Ms. McCabe. I feel so lucky. Good evening, board members. Hope everyone is still awake and doing well tonight. I will say, we're meeting with the athletic directors again tomorrow. I certainly would like to get their feedback of what is a reasonable rate as well as the reporting limitations and how often they're going to be, how they will be receiving them within the virtual format as well as the hybrid format, fingers crossed, so that we can determine what is a reasonable thing. And since the plan is to meet next week, if, you know, I don't want to take up a lot of time on that next week, but at least come back with numbers for you all as far as a proposal, if that would work for you.
Sounds good.
I think it sounds good.
I think.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Duffy. Okay, so we can take the vote on this, knowing that we're okay with what's already outlined. We may be adding a little bit of information to it in the near future. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not sure by the question. Would you rather we table it and vote when you have the whole information? Which way would you prefer?
It really doesn't matter to us. I don't think that... And Mr. Duffy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that waiting until next week is going to impact anything. So if you feel more comfortable waiting and seeing, you know, the finished recommendation that next week, that would be fine.
I think more, if we vote on it and then you ask the ADs, do they feel like we've already decided something? Or do you want us to wait for their feedback? That was more my concern.
Well, the ADs are aware of what's being presented to you today or tonight. That's not a surprise. And I don't think it's necessarily going to be a problem to wait because it's not as though the December portion is infringing upon anybody with, as far as the eligibility, because that won't kick in until February or January. So that shouldn't... So waiting another week really doesn't seem too problematic. Plus, we get the opportunity to see each other again.
Okay, since we do have a meeting scheduled for next week, and so we can have that discussion then. So, but we've given you the guidance that we're generally good with the concept, which I think allows... with the concept, which I think allows you to move forward, and then we can come back and finalize it next week? Okay. So if that's it, then I will make a motion to table this item, the vote on this item, until next week. Do I have a second?
Should we table it, or should we withdraw the motion? Because it'll be written differently, right?
Yes, we have a motion.
There was a motion to approve, and we had the discussion. And now it's going to be that we're going to, we're going to delay the vote until...
To amend the motion.
So just amend the motion? Okay. So we'll amend the motion to vote on this next week?
There you go.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Good.
Second?
Okay. Then any other questions or discussion? Okay, so then I will call for the vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, and that ends the action items. We don't have any particular items under Section 9 for discussion, although I do know that we've been discussing that we wanted to make sure that we have a stopping point at the end of every meeting to say, was there anything that we discussed that we want to put in the realm of the CAC potentially discussing? And Ms. Gaddis, their next meeting is December 3rd? December 3rd, okay. And so we had a list of topics that we had, you know, had consensus on last meeting. So all of those things will be going to that group on the 3rd. Okay. Board members, was there anything from the discussion that we had tonight that we'd like to think about asking the CAC to take a look at? Like, they've probably got a pretty full plate at this point.
They do have a pretty big list, yeah.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that we get it into our muscle memory as part of the end of every regular board meeting, that we, that we bring that up for discussion. Okay. All right. Board members, any other unfinished business or new business?
I would like to bring just one thing up. I know I talked to you. I would really like to go back and talk about GNT sometime. I know we got a full plate. The name was changed. There's nothing under COMAR, under Advanced Academics. I did talk to Mr. Barnes. I've talked to Dr. Lockard. And I think people were confused. The parents didn't realize the name had changed. The teachers were surprised that the first day of school, things were changed. I just, I want to know what's really going on. And that's been one of our weaker points. And we have talked about this for four years. And I want to see what's, what are we doing during COVID and what do we need to improve on? Or, you know, I just want to, it doesn't have to be tomorrow or the next day, but I want to, I mean, when we have some time to, take time to hear what's really going on. I want to know. And I think the name change was very confusing.
Right. I think we've done a lot of work on that front. We've made a lot of changes. But all those changes were being made right at the time that the world was exploding around us. So I think it probably would be a good idea. And it was a branding change, right? Like, we went from GNT to Advanced Academics. And because of everything else going on and so much noise around it, I think the branding got missed, and people are kind of a little bit confused about it.
Yes, they are. And I just, I just want to know what's, you know, what's going on in COVID country. And this is one of our weaker points, and I want to see what we're doing to improve it.
Sure. And Mr. Anderson, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say absolutely, Ms. Herbert. The last time we brought that up, I had sat down and met with a number of people. And we are preparing to provide an update. As you know, we were prepared to provide an update right when we broke for COVID in the spring.
Right.
We are, we are planned and we will be prepared to provide an update to the board. We were thinking either December or January, to put everyone on the same page. And we'd be happy to do that. We're prepared to do that.
I just know we have a lot on our plate now, and I don't want to add to right now. But I think we need to know what's going on, so.
Well, we don't want to lose sight of this.
No, absolutely. I want, I just want to know what we're doing and what we've improved and what's working and what's not working. And I know we are in COVID, and that's totally different now.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to.
Do we have a preference as to whether it's December or January?
Let's do it in January. It's just...
Do it in January?
I'd recommend January, yep.
No, and I don't want any pressure. I just want to know sometime down the road what's going on and...
As Mr. Anderson said, we were actually bringing a GNT update to the board last spring, and that got, that got pushed.
Right. That ended it.
We'll be happy to do that in January.
And I think it got lost in the...
Yep.
Everything else. So I just, I just want to know what's going on.
Okay. So we had one item that we wanted to add to the December agenda earlier in the meeting. And now we'll, we'll also say that we would like to add an update on the GNT program in January.
In January, yes.
Okay. Board members, any other new or unfinished business? No? All right. Then with that, at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020, we have the FY22 Operating Budget Work Session in the boardroom here at 125 North Court Street. And also at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, December 9th, 2020, we have the regularly scheduled board meeting with citizen participation at 5:00 PM and 6:30 PM here in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. And earlier in the meeting, we also did say that we will be adding a meeting to our, to our schedule from, one week from tonight, next Wednesday. Any other items that we wanted to discuss?
So the 18th, will we meet at 5:00, 5:00 PM next Wednesday, or?
On November, so that's November 18th?
Yes.
And, Dr. Lockard, will we need a closed session before that, or likely just go straight into open at 5:00 PM?
Yeah, I don't have any closed items for you right now. So I think we could just go right into the open session.
Go right into open at 5:00 PM?
Yep.
Okay. So we will tentatively schedule that one for 5:00 PM next Wednesday, November 18th.
Yep.
And before we, before we sign out, I do just want to add one final part of comment about, so, well, a couple of part comments, but Veterans Day, just want to thank all those in our community for their, for their service in the armed services. And, you know, so glad that we were able to still, even in this really strange time, have some, some great activities in our schools and recognition of the amazing services and contributions that those folks have made. And also with the high schools, the B cohort starting tomorrow, I do want to wish those students the best of luck. And please remember that, just as we asked the community earlier to do the right things, we're going to ask our high schoolers also to do the right things. You know, as much as I'm sure that they want to have some of those kumbaya and close, close encounters with their friends, please, please make sure that you follow all of the masking rules, the social distancing and everything. Do the right thing, and hopefully, with a little bit of luck, we'll be able to keep this going. All right. Board members, anything else before we sign off for the night? Okay, then with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Herbert.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Bataglia. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, and everyone, have a great evening.